You said these are not going to switch to us, these are going to stay. Okay. So, welcome. This is the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners, 6 and 1 meeting. I am the Chair, Sean Flowerdy. With me is Vice Chair and Commissioner Rick Vest, Commissioner Deb Shore, Commissioner Roma Amundson, and Commissioner Krista Yocum. Mr. Clerk, will you please begin?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of the written material to be discussed in today's open meeting is available from the county clerk staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on Kenney's website at lancaster.inny.gov. We have one item on the agenda this evening, and that's a public hearing for the 1 and 6 Road and Bridge Improvement Program for 2021 through 2026.
Very good. This will go ahead and open up the public hearing for the 1 and 6 then. The first person to speak will obviously be Keny Engineer Dingman. I will, and this won't apply to staff, I will go ahead and limit testimony tonight to five minutes, but we don't look like we have too many people here, so if you have to go 30 seconds over, I can probably forgive you. So, go ahead and kick it off.
Good evening and welcome.
Excuse me, can I go ahead and swear again?
Sure.
Can you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Good evening and welcome to the 2021 1 and 6 Road and Bridge Hearing. I do have several members of my staff with me tonight, and we're fortunate that during this COVID time, although we've kind of all been on lockdown, we've had some big changes in county engineering. And so, I'd like to start, and if you could stand as I mention your name, because then the cameraman can find you. I'd like to start with John Berry tonight. John is joined by his wife tonight. I would like to announce my appointment of John Berry as a county surveyor to take Ken Schroeder's place. I'm super excited to have him here. As county surveyor, he will by statute serve as my deputy, and John is a licensed surveyor in the state of Nebraska, which is the statutory requirement. And in addition to that, he is very active in P-SPAN, which is the professional surveyors' organization for Nebraska, and so he's served on that board for quite a while now. And so, I'm excited to have him step into the leadership position. I asked his wife if she was going to cheer for him tonight. I noticed that she did not. John, maybe we'll have to have a talk about that later. Thank you. Larry Legg is the Assistant County Engineer. Karen Wilson is our Special Projects Engineer. Paul Vidmar is with us tonight. He is our roadway engineer. There he is. Paul moved here about a month ago from Kansas City. He has a number of years' experience with BNSF, and so we are excited to have this position filled. It was vacant for more than a year, and so we're glad to have him on the team. In addition to Paul, we've also added Engineer 1 Allison Cook. Why, she's not here tonight while everyone has been gone, and so I think Allison got to work with us for two to four weeks before we sent everyone home, and so she hasn't really got to meet everyone yet. In addition to that, I have Dr. Ali, and then I promised Ali I would not butcher his name, and so if I do, I'm just going to let him scream it out behind me. Ali Schmidell?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. So, Ali doesn't know that as a new staff member that I'm going to embarrass him on camera. Ali is also new. He moved here recently from Arizona, the day after Labor Day, which was, in which he asked me, "How much colder than this is it going to get here?" If anyone speaks to him, tell him not colder than it was on that day. Okay? What I do want to take a moment, though, to congratulate Ali. He graduated with a PhD in engineering this summer, and he didn't get a chance to walk. And so, I think that it's kind of sad during COVID. I asked him how he celebrated graduating with his PhD in engineering, which his specialty is asphalt, by the way, and he said, "I took a picture of myself in a backyard." And so, if, because he didn't get to walk, if we could all give Ali a round of applause to congratulate him. Ali, now you can share this tape on YouTube with your mom, so that she'll know her investment was worth it, right? Ron Bahati is with us tonight as our operations manager, as well as Bud Geislinger as our assistance operation manager. During COVID, we've also done something that, well, we did it right before COVID, and we're still working on it, and that's that we reorganized all of our maintenance. And so, we have a north district now and a south district, and two specialized work groups. And so, heading our south district is Roger Hosenfeldt, and he is a newer manager. There he is. Heading our north district is Curtis Proconi. All right, I heard him get up. Mike Clark is helping us out with our asphalt maintenance, which has been a lot with the South Beltway this summer. And we have Brandon Kramer. And so, Brandon Kramer is heading our new group, which is doing bridge. It's our bridge crew, and so we're really excited to have a group totally dedicated to repairing bridges and pipes in Lancaster County. I also noted that Alan Zapp, who is the MPO Planner, has joined us tonight in the back. And I thought I saw the Planning Director, David Carey, somewhere, but, oh, he hid in the back room. We reached capacity, so he's hiding in the back room. With that, I'd like to go ahead and get, there he is, the wave in the way back. The brave new time of COVID, right? This is my contact information. I always kind of throw it out there. I always like to remind the public that the 441-7681 is answered 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So, if you do have a road emergency, please call it in. Please use this number before calling 911, so we're trying to keep the burden off the 911 system. A little bit about Lancaster County's road and bridge system. We have 302 bridges or bridge-length culverts on our system. In addition to that, we have 45 miles of dirt road. That means it's never been graded. It doesn't have any materials on it. We only maintain it a couple times a year. We have over 1,000 miles of gravel road in Lancaster County and just a little under 300 miles of paved road. Lancaster County, we have a lot of drainage, so we have approximately 1,000 box culverts. These are culverts that are under 20 feet in span, and approximately 6,900 pipe culverts, including driveway culverts. Some of the things that we do in the engineering department is construction survey, monument corner preservation, land subdivision oversight, as well as our RGIS control. Lancaster County has two less buildings this year. We actually did sell the Hickman Building to the city of Hickman, and we sold the Bennett Building to the neighbor in Bennett. Both of these buildings, we were no longer able to use. The Hickman Building was totally contained within the floodplain. It didn't have a bathroom or any plumbing, so we weren't really able to remodel it, and equipment no longer fit in our Bennett Building, which was unfortunate. Lancaster County continues to be the repair shop, the mechanic shop, for all of Lancaster County. In addition to that, this year, we've added that we do supply the gas to Lincoln Police Department from our facility. We were fortunate in the last year to have a really mild winter. That's a good thing, because we kind of needed a break, and minimal flooding in the spring. And so, we should all knock on wood or do some sort of crazy dance to ensure this continues to happen, but we have not closed a bridge in the last year, or this spring, which has been a really, a really good thing. So, some of the challenges that we faced in the 2020 year were the ongoing Saltillo road dammens associated with heavy trucks from the Lincoln South Beltway construction. The South Beltway construction and the road closures and detours for that has definitely impacted the overall maintenance of our system. We are struggling. It does pull from not only our labor, but our assets as well. And so, we will remain concerned about that. We are keeping a tally of all the costs associated with the maintenance of the Beltway corridors, and we're, we continue to do the best we can, but it is causing a drain on the maintenance of the rest of our system. Additional challenges from 2020. We are continuing to work to restore the gravel roads from the flood of 2019, and it's humbling. It takes four to five years to restore these roads once they've been washed away from flooding. Of course, we had the major flood in 2015, and so we'd made it to where we were just about okay again when we were hit that second time. And so, we're going to continue to work on that. It is rather humbling. We have finally gotten gravel and rock, and so that's good, because for a while, there wasn't any. In addition to that, we had a piece of equipment hit by lightning, and it unfortunately burned. And we had, during the riots in Lincoln, our excavator was actually shot several times, causing several thousand dollars in damage. Our big weather issue this year has been wind, and the trees just haven't got a break, so they're kind of damaged, and they get hit by wind again. We've just spent a lot of time this summer picking up sticks. In addition to that, COVID-19, of course, has challenged us greatly. We've had a number of quarantines in Lancaster County Engineering to include, at one point last week, about 50% of the staff in the south end of the county being quarantined. So, it's obviously had some effects on our operation. In addition to that, we are experiencing a number of issues that really aren't easy to foresee in our supply chain. So, this year, when we went to turn on our air conditioner in the building, it didn't work. It turned out that train manufacturing was shut down for COVID, so we waited for the part to be manufactured, and then the manufactured part was lost in transportation in the riots. And so, I prayed for a couple weeks that we would find the part. We did, so that we could have air conditioning. Our other concern for the year is the loss of highway allocation funding, which is, in essence, the gas tax. We've experienced, to date, about a million and a half dollar reduction in that, and that is going to be significant to the maintenance of our operation. Additional challenges in 2020. I hate to sound like an unhappy farmer, but it seems like we either have too much rain or not enough rain. There's not ever that just right. And so, if it's going to continue to stay dry like this, I think as a county, we're going to have to look at some sort of dust control program. We don't necessarily have the equipment or the manpower for that at this time. The 2018 Infrastructure Task Force study did talk about a need for a dust control program in Lancaster County. I think we're going to continue to get dust complaints, and at some point, with the traffic on our gravel roads, we're going to need to do something about it. We have created a snow removal plan this year. We did present that to the staff. We're excited. We at Lancaster County are not going to follow a protocol-based snow removal plan. In other words, we're not going, I'm not going to say, hey, if there's four inches of snow, we're going to move the snow. We're going to really look at the type of snow, and when it happened, and where it happened, and make our decisions from there. We think that's the best way to manage snow removal in the county. Other challenges faced in 2020. As you're aware, I've come to you, and I've asked for a lot of equipment over the last several years. The new equipment is smart. It takes, it takes a lot to run it. Our new snow plows will drop materials in the middle instead of out the back, and there's just a number of upgrades to them. We've gathered the staff up in order to socially distance the north half and then the south half, where we did training and certification in safety protocols for all this equipment, as well as some additional safety training the last couple days. Our 2020 FEMA process continues to march on. We haven't been paid all of the money from the 2019 from FEMA yet. We're still waiting on a few pipes. And then, of course, FEMA always makes these adjustments to us. We received one the other day where they said, "Well, we paid you $103,000, but our audit shows we overpaid you by $113, so you need to write us a check back for $113." I'm sure both entities spent more than $113 processing this check, but be it what it's made, we did return the money to FEMA. We have not received any of the Nebraska Emergency Management money yet, which is 12.5%. And then, of course, Lancaster County will have to match 12.5% in order to get to 100% for county engineering. I want to talk a little bit about scour critical bridges or erosion. That's the major issue with our bridges in Lancaster County. Our creeks continue to get wider and deeper. Some of my peers refer them as hungry canyons. I hope not to, not to have anything that reaches canyon status in Lancaster County, but we do have some that are of high concern. Last year's mild winter allowed us to continue to repair those bridges all the way through the winter. Last year, after the flood, we had 62 sites that were either scour critical, as defined by the Federal Highway Administration, or scour susceptible, as defined by our staff. At this current time, we have 51 sites. So, we are gaining. It's still higher than the 42 we had in 2018, but we're going to continue to work on it. I want to talk a little bit about bridge sufficiencies, and so, and I'm going to nerd out for just a moment, if I can. So, bridges' sufficiency ratings are on a 100-point scale. It's not my favorite rating, because only seven of those 100 points relate back to the channel or scour. So, it doesn't really tell us a lot about our bridges in Lancaster County, but it does tell us about how strong our bridges are. So, in 2018, we had 20 bridges that were less than 100 points, or less than 50 points on a 100-point scale, 20 bridges. Since 2018, we have replaced or repaired 11 of those. And so, you have this moment where you're like, hey, we're making progress. Sometimes it's like, we're rocking it, right? Sadly, if I'm to look at the 2020 bridge sufficiency ratings, we have 24 bridges that are less than 50, and so you'll note a number of new bridges, and then six of those bridges are currently have a plan for being repaired or replaced. So, although we've worked on 11 to take them off the list, we actually have increased the overall numbers on the list, which is unfortunate. Some days, I feel like I'm not, not winning. We currently have 16 bridges closed in Lancaster County. Seven of those are under design or construction. We are hoping to construct a couple bridges this winter. We did get three bridges reconstructed last winter, which was awesome. Now, last winter was also a really good winter, but I'll tell you, as an engineer, if I got three bridges once, then that means the next winter, I want to get four. I don't know if I'll be able to pull that off, but I'm going to try. Nine of those closed bridges have no construction funding or repair plan. When we look at our overall bridges, this is what our bridge health summary looks like. We have 33 that are structurally deficient, four that are functionally obsolete. That means they're not wide enough to really pass traditional current traffic. We have 36 that are scour susceptible, 15 that are scour critical, as defined by the Federal Highway Administration, 24 with a sufficiency rating of less than 50. We currently rate 62nd out of 93 counties, and that's for the percentage of square feet of deficient bridge. We're 62nd. That's a number, hey, we're actually up three numbers from last year, so we're improving. I'd really like to be like in the top 10, you know? We're fifth of 93 counties for the most bridges that are closed, and that's really a tragic number with the population that we have in Lancaster County. We also maintain subdivisions in Lancaster County. This continues to be a concern for me. Many of the counties around us have a moratorium on taking on additional subdivision maintenance due to the cost. So, we currently have 42 miles of gravel subdivision that we're taking care of, and 35 miles of paved subdivisions. If we're to look at growth in the county, I think this becomes significant. In 1995, we were maintaining 54 miles of subdivisions. We're currently maintaining about 77 miles of subdivisions. They do require a higher level of maintenance than just our regular section line roads, which can be cumbersome. We've also worked this last year on a lot of pavement maintenance. It's a little bit different program than we've done in previous years. We used to just do a mill two inches of asphalt off and fill it with three inches of new Dr. Ali in the back is like shaking his head that that's a bad idea, and he's absolutely right. This last year, we did 13 miles of what we call hot-in-place overlay with a widening. So, you're going to notice South 82nd Street has been widened two feet on either side, so that we can just get those roads just a little bit wider for the traveling public. In addition to that, we did a mill two and fill two inches on 1 and 1/4 miles, and shown in this photo is a reconstruction of Northwest 84th Street, and that was about 3/10 of a mile. When we talk about pavement maintenance, I've put some photos up. This is the asphalt train that we've been doing the hot-in-place recycle process with, some photos of how it goes. It actually is able to recycle that asphalt. It grinds it up, it throws some more emulsifier inside, and lays it back down. The process is actually much more complex than that, and I'm sure there's someone behind me who could talk to you about it at length, if you wanted to know more. In FY14, when we really started looking at aggressive maintenance of our approximately 300 miles of pavement, we had more than 90 miles that were in need of maintenance. My team and I have focused diligently on ways to maintain our asphalt that are more cost-effective and get the maintenance to the asphalt sooner, so that it isn't as expensive to maintain. We currently only have a little under 36 miles that are in need of maintenance for the future year, so I think that is great, great progress. Pavement needs across Lancaster County, and we really want to start looking at paving roads when we get more than 300 vehicles a day. I just want to say to anyone who's in the audience, we were not able to take traffic counts this year. So, I won't be presenting new traffic counts with my, with my report tonight. We felt that with COVID, that the report, the traffic counts wouldn't be valid, and they do take a long time to get done. We kind of have a rolling schedule that we get a number of them every week. So, we have, based on our 2019 counts, we have 24 miles that have more than 300 cars a day, and we have nine miles with more than 400 cars a day. And this continues to be of great concern to me as county engineer. Some of the things that we've been looking at in Lancaster County, and these things do take a number of years to get in process. One of them is Saltillo. It did take about three years to get the safety study through the Nebraska Department of Transportation. We are hoping to be able to have some sort of public meeting, however that may look, however that may look, in November, on what the Saltillo corridor may look like in the future. The state, in our inter-local agreement, has agreed to contribute approximately $8.1 million to improvements on Saltillo. We think we're going to need more than that by the time we get to it, because that didn't account for that major slab of the roadway in Saltillo. Additional existing pavement needs and upgrades, 148th Street. So, in 2018, we did a study of 148th Street from Old Cheney to Amberly Road. It was a bit of a surprise to us, as you see the area in blue on the map, to find out that it really needs to be a four-lane divided highway prior to the year 2030. And that was obviously very expensive, and we continue to be concerned about that. We are working with the state to get safety funds to improve the intersections in this corridor. From when we got the safety funds from Saltillo, they've changed their equation a little bit. And so, I think, I believe we now need to have a cost-benefit ratio of four in order to get funding, and so that has changed, has changed the way that some of the safety funds look for us. When we look at pavement upgrades, South 68th Street continues to be a concern to us. It's probably the corridor where I get the most phone calls, from Saltillo to First Road. We know that there's a number of intersection improvements that need to happen in this corridor. In the 1 and 6, we're going to continue to try to get safety funds to improve these corridors or these intersections, as well as do something to get South 68th Street a little wider. And then, lastly, we've just finished up a traffic study on Fletcher Avenue with the assumption that there's no truck traffic on Amberly Road. This was also a bit of a surprise to me, to find out that if truck traffic was not allowed on Amberly Road, there was more than 700 vehicles a day on Fletcher Avenue prior to the year 2025. And so, we're going to be in a very similar state with Fletcher Road as we currently are with 98th Street if we don't start moving along. Bridge projects that are completed or in progress in FY2020. We have four bridges that we constructed. We repaired two bridges. We have eight bridges that are either under construction or under contract, and we're still waiting for the, and I've said this for the last six months, for the last little bit of environmental permit on F-80. bit of environmental permit on F-88 on North 14th Street before we go ahead and let that out for construction. Shown here is one of our four bridge-to-box replacements that were completed. This is W-164, which is on West Princeton, just east of Southwest 58th Street. It did replace a WPA-era cut limestone bridge, and so, I was glad to get a more stable structure in here and get this road open to the public again. And then, here's a photo of the Hickman Viaduct. We did pump about four tons of foam behind each end of the abutment in order to stabilize it. I always do think it's kind of crazy that when, when the void is full, the foam kind of pops out the side somewhat dramatically, but it's good to have those voids full. We did repair a number of bridges this way last year. It's not a repair for all bridge types, but it's a repair for some of them. And then, in addition, we have Bridge Q-72. Mr. Kramer, who is in the room working with the bridge crew, has assured me that this will open tomorrow, and so, we're excited to have this bridge repaired and ready for the public to use again. We also did 15 miles of overlay this year and two new miles of pavement. South 82nd Street was paved with highway allocation dollars. We did save that in a sinking fund for a number of years so that we could, we could pay for that $1.2 million project. And I'm sure the people that are here from the Hickman area or anyone that's traveling around the South Beltway appreciates that paved section. It is, it is a very nice road. Just a little bit about South 82nd Street. It is really our new road section that we want to go to. So, it's a 28-foot-wide top. If you drive it, you can feel that it feels like you have a little more room. In addition to that, we ground edge line rumble strips into it. And so, what we did also with that is we go ahead and paint the white line across that. That way, when you're driving down the road, your car lights just reflect that a little more so you can see where that white line is. It's really important. It's a nice added safety feature. And with the extra width on that road, if you do start to meander off, you're going to hit that, and it kind of makes that really obnoxious noise that none of us like. What we really want to do is ensure that our drivers are staying on the road. Bridge projects proposed for FY21. We'll have one bridge to be constructed, one bridge to be repaired, and four bridges that will be in design. We hope to continue construction on several of the bridges. I hope to have another nice winter so that we can finish some of our bridge-to-box culvert projects. Projects proposed for '21, seven miles of asphalt overlay, 21 miles of pavement preservation, and the engineering on 24 miles of road. That might not be all necessarily roads. Some of those will include the intersections. The engineering is shown in blue on this map. A major emphasis will continue to be on maintaining the assets we have. There will be no new pavement next year. The county has been working with the Nebraska Game and Parks and Nebraska Department of Transportation to overlay several of our recreation roads east of Hickman. We've kind of had some issues that these roads aren't necessarily very modern, and we've had some issues kind of meeting the criteria in order to get rec-road funding. And Mr. Lake has continued to work diligently with NDOT to ensure that we can be funded. Additional road projects for FY21. The Lincoln Metropolitan Planning Organization, or MPO, has committed LC-LC funds to the design and construction of 98th Street in cooperation with Lancaster County. It's in two different projects, A to O and A to Old Cheney. I'm so hopeful that I can come to the board in the future and we can get early funding so that we can do advanced construction of this and be reimbursed when the federal funds are available because this corridor is extremely busy, and I mean, I just remain concerned that it is in dramatic need of pavement. In addition to that, the East Beltway Corridor Protection Program will still probably have several large payments to purchase right-of-way in our current budget year. We're going to continue our focus on North 14th Street. I started focusing on corridors about five years ago. I'd hoped to get like a corridor a year. North 14th Street snagged me. It's got four bad bridges in about three miles. It's got a number of bad pipes and bad box culverts. So, we have replaced one of the four bridges. Actually, as of this afternoon, we've opened two of the four bridges. And so, because we were in training, I wasn't able to get out there and do the fancy bridge opening, and we're hopeful to get the third of the four bridges in the next three weeks. And I think that will put us in pretty good shape for winter. Bridge F-88, which is the larger bridge, I do expect that to cost somewhere around $1.75 million. We're still waiting on the last of the permitting for. While we're working on that bridge, we'll replace several other pipes and box culverts in the area that are in dramatic need of upgrading. If I can talk a little bit about proposed projects from FY22 to FY26. I have shown on the left-hand side a map of the bridges that are closed. The bridges with the blue dots are under contract. The bridges with blue Xs are being repaired by our own forces. The remaining bridges do not have funding identified and could be closed for several more years. I do always want to be honest with the public about that. Most of these structures are larger and will take some additional design and funding. We are designing several larger bridges this year so that we can hopefully have the funding to repair, to replace them in the future. Proposed projects for FY22, '26. Lancaster County will continue to aggressively maintain the paved roads in order to preserve our existing system. Engineering permitting and right-of-way acquisition and construction of Saltillo, of the Saltillo Road Safety Project will continue to be a major work effort for our department. We're kind of hoping to be able to like slide that right in in the right spot around the South Beltway. In addition to that, we will begin working on the engineering permitting and construction of the 98th Street corridor on the east side of Lincoln. This will provide for additional development and traffic relief. The county could not afford to do this project without MPO funding. And lastly, in closing, I'd just like to say, I'm really hoping for another mild winter and another mild spring so we can continue to get caught up on the maintenance of our system. And so, with that, I will step aside and, and listen to what the, the public has to say. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any members of the public here wishing to speak on the 1 and 6 plan?
We've got people that have signed in, so I'll call them as they've signed in. First testifying will be those that signed in in favor. First is Mike Werner from Waverly. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir. I'm Mike Werner, spelled W-E-R-N-E-R. Address is 10220 East Oak Lane Circle. Just for the record there, clerk. Thank you, Pam, for your, you always give a good report, I feel, kind of an overall view of where everything's at and what your plans are and what you're asking commissioners to consider and think about. So, once again, a very professional job. Thank you, Pam. I'd like to thank all your staff, too, that it's nice seeing them out there at Waverly all the time. I like seeing Curtis around. He's here. I always like seeing him, and I see Larry a little bit here and there, but you have good people out there. I'm telling you that they have, you have good staff members out there. The county should be proud of its employees that work for county engineering. Having said that, I would like to speak in favor of Fletcher Avenue proposal there on the, I believe it's on for the six-year plan, that I'm in favor of that. I turned in, in 2018, we, the city adopted a resolution that I gave to the clerk. In 2019, we had a supporting letter, again, referencing that resolution. So, it's nice to see it on the proposed 1 and 6 plan. I do think that Waverly would benefit greatly, greatly, from numerous reasons why Fletcher should be paved. So, thank you for at least considering it, commissioners, to put it on the plan. I'd also like to expand a little bit on Pam's note on 148th Street, the study corridor, that yes, when that county did that safety study, needless to say, we were all shocked by some of the numbers we found in that. It was, it's really, it makes you gasp for breath. So, I know that Pam and her staff have been working hard for not only 148th Street, but as well as 68th Street, as she mentioned, for some sort of possibly safety funding or whatever, and we would definitely encourage, if that could happen, anything to do to improve the safety on 148th widening or the intersections. Pam, I think you're spot on on that personally. I think that needs to be addressed. I went home two days ago, county commissioner, to see my mother. She had her 84th birthday, so I left early, quarter after 6:00 in the morning on a Tuesday. And what's sad is I'm heading south of 148th. And I mean, it's just solid lights coming north and solid lights going south, and people are stopping to let people turn at intersections. So, it isn't, it's a serious matter. If you really drive at any amount, you will find out that it's a little frightening. So, I encourage that effort to continue, Pam, if possible. I really would. I know there's a standby project that was a couple of years ago named, I believe, Pam, that would be North 162nd Street from Highway 6 up to Ashland Road. I had asked a couple of years ago, the county, at least consider it. I am going to again ask if they could at least consider adding to one mile from Highway 6 to Bluff Road in that potential project if funding would be found. Bluff Road there is paved. I do believe the city, so the county commissioners know, that we've budgeted a small amount of money to work with State of Nebraska at the intersection of 148th and Highway 6, that I would say in a couple, three years, there'll be something constructed there, a traffic light or something, but we're going to be working with NDOT. It's their call and their standards, what you have to do there. And I think the extra paving of that one mile, how that could aid us is there's numerous people that work in Omaha, and if that one mile was paved, when they're coming back from Highway 6, they wouldn't even bother coming to 148th. They could come into Waverly altogether by just missing 148th completely, which I think would aid. So, I'm just asking that you at least consider that, to add that one mile to the, you know, to that potential project, I forget, standby project, I believe is what you call it, Pam. Correct? Okay. Then lastly, ma'am, that I just wanted to make mention on is, this might be, I don't want to make it a controversial issue, but I, I asked the county commissioners to at least consider capital improvement projects that would be planned for in cities' ETJs. If cities, as an example, Waverly, let's say Fletcher Avenue becomes a reality. Well, there's one mile of 134th that's within our ETJ, and how we get a gigantic benefit from Fletcher Avenue being paved is paving the two miles of 134th from Waverly to Fletcher directly. All the truck traffic coming in out of Waverly there would be able to run on hard-surface road, miss all our schools. All I'm saying is, is if that's a capital improvement project, at least see if the cities, if they were willing to cost-share, you might be able to give them priority. That's all that I'm asking, you know, that I'm not saying that you ignore it or whatever, but if somebody is willing to come to you and say, hey, if it's a million dollars a mile to hard-surface a road, and some entity is saying, we're willing to cost-share half million on that first mile, I'm just saying, well, maybe that could bump up the priority list for that entity. That's, that's all I'm saying. And it could possibly be a way to stretch the dollars a bit, to get a little more tax dollars out in the more rural areas of the county. So, again, that's just, some people don't like me saying that. I just feel if we want a road paved in our city and we're getting a benefit, well, we should be able to put our money where our mouth is at, you know? Otherwise, keep your mouth shut. So, we're the ones that are going to get the huge benefits, so we should be willing to cost-share with the county and things like that. And likewise, other cities should too, if they want them that badly. Thank you very much.
Next is Stephanie Fisher. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I'm Stephanie Fisher. I'm the city administrator in Waverly, and I've been there a little over three years. And in that time that I've been in Waverly, one of the constant concerns that I've always heard has been concerning the truck traffic that happens on Amberly Road. So, we are here to ask that the county consider paving Fletcher Avenue, keeping that on that priority list. We feel that any, any way that we can divert some of the truck traffic off of Amberly Road would be truly beneficial to our citizens, especially to our schools. Our young pedestrians, we have schools on both sides of Amberly Road. We have a lot of housing on both sides of Amberly Road, so we have a lot of pedestrians that cross Amberly Road. Three-lane, a three-lane traffic way, has lots of heavy trucks on it. We all know semi-trucks can't stop fast. We have a lot of young pedestrians that are unsure crossing the streets, so we're looking to do anything to divert that truck traffic. Paving Fletcher Avenue would certainly help that. The city has worked with the schools. We installed RRFBs, two of them on 148th Street and two of them on Amberly Road, to help our pedestrians feel a little bit safer crossing those trafficways, but it would certainly help much more if we could get some of that truck traffic diverted off of there. Also, on 148th Street is another busy, busy road. So, improving the safety on that road would be helpful to also our schoolchildren that are driving to and from, parents driving their kids to and from. We have a very large school district that uses all of these, all of these roads in this northeast Lancaster County. So, I also do appreciate all of the efforts by the county in everything in northeast Lancaster County. That helps all of our citizens, our residents in Waverly, but also the rural residents that participate in things in Waverly. So, I do ask that you continue to prioritize Fletcher Avenue. Anything else? Thank you.
Next is Silas Clark. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Good evening, county commissioners. It's been a little bit since I've been in front of you, as we've all been through COVID. So, I just have a few very quick prepared remarks. First off, I want to definitely thank the county engineer and also all of you for the work on, on 82nd Street, as Pam just outlined here. It's fantastic, not only the road being paved, but also that additional two feet on each side, just as a humongous safety measure for our area. It's great of building those roads with those extra feet as we were at that open house with Commissioner Jordan, Commissioner Ominson, so it was fantastic to see that additional improvement. So, thank you very much for that added funds into that, that road. I'm here tonight just to add a continued, you know, as I've come here year and year, continued to support for South 68th Street. As you know, that safety study was conducted by FHU back in 2018, outlined some fantastic safety measures from Roca Road all the way down to Firth Road, being widening of that road and some certain sections, some roundabouts and some sections there also in between there. So, I do see it on your 1 and 6-year plan with some engineering costs coming for this very next year, also then rolling in of looking at putting its shoulders in the, in the future years. So, just here to definitely support that project. As you know, we all, I thought we had a good funding mechanism for a lot of our roads back and forth that fell through, but definitely always interested in looking at those additional funding efforts and then what we can do on, in between that. You heard that from Mayor Mike tonight, too, but you know, just, just the safety measures in between our schools and in those truck routes in Waverly, but also, you know, in between all those kids going down to Norris Public Schools is so important to us. So, again, thank you for South 82nd Street. Thank you for South 54th Street. Those have been humongous improvements, especially with the South Beltway, as it's really cut off 68th Street right now for us, and, and we've done the same. We're still on the path to put in the roundabout within the middle of Hickman in 2021, so we've been saving cash each year. We've been putting about $330,000 away for the last three years for that project. So, that is still on schedule for 2021, 2022 build. We hope that we can participate with the county, especially on those shoulders on Roca Road to the south, but also those larger improvements that we really need help for down for the school corridor from Hickman South. So, thank you very much, and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Next, we'll go to the persons that have signed in in neutral. First one is Michelle Lincoln. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I wasn't really planning on requesting anything. So, I am the village clerk with the Village of Bennett, and I would like the county to consider doing an inter-local agreement with the Village of Bennett to help us maintain our county roads that are within our court, corporate limits. We do not own a maintainer. We had the, the maintainer was stationed there in Bennett, and I think they traveled those roads and maybe picked it up as they were heading out of town. And so, I'm just requesting that we can take a look at maybe doing an inter-local agreement.
Okay. Next is Shailen Sands. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Good evening. My name is Shailen Sands. My husband and I reside at 7,000 Olive Creek Road. We've lived there for the last seven years, and during that time, I have worked at least part-time from home. Last couple of years, I've been full-time from home. So, on numerous occasions, I've had the experience of hearing emergency personnel arriving at the intersection or near the intersection of South 68th and Olive Creek Road. And I'm sure many of you know that a young lady lost her life in 2017 due to a chain reaction accident that started at that intersection. When my daughter was in high school, we worried every day about her making it home safely, coming over and topping that hill, and then having to break and make the turn onto Olive Creek Road. My neighbor Teresa Hendricks told me this morning that they made their children drive Princeton up 82nd and then back just to completely stay off of 68th to make sure that they'd make it home okay. So, I'm here tonight to ask you to make the intersection improvements at 68th and Olive Creek Road a top priority in your plans. In 2015, a study was done by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. It's titled "The Economic and Societal Impact of Motor Vehicle Crashes, 2010 Revised." The economic cost to society for each traffic accident fatality is $1.4 million, and each critically injured survivor costs an average of $1 million. The report also states that approximately 7% of all motor vehicle crash costs are paid by public revenue. So, federal funds account for 4%, local, county pays, picks up the other 3%. In addition, a study entitled "Nebraska Economic Cost Estimate for Motor Vehicle Crashes" in 2018 with the data coming from 2015 shows property damage crashes have an average cost of $4,200, and a possible injury crash averages $21,000. So, whether we like it or not, there are real costs to not taking action to improve this intersection. In, in the study mentioned earlier by Silas, the Felsberg-Holden-Ullvig on October 11th that the board had ordered, page 19 shows in Table 8 that 11 accidents have occurred between Princeton Road and Olive Creek Road on South 68th. And of course, I don't have the numbers for the past two years. But in looking at this table and using the information from the other studies that I cited, we find, we can find not doing this improvement has already cost nearly $4.5 million. In the same FHU study, page 36, under, under the summary in Item 3 states that based on the existing traffic operations and crash patterns, it is recommended that northbound left and right turning lanes should be constructed on the northbound approach to Olive Creek Road. In addition, the southbound left turning lane should be constructed as well. In that same report on page 28, or, excuse me, 27 and 28, the estimated cost for the project included, projects included is $369,740. So, costs have probably gone up. We can probably easily guess that's at least $500,000. Now, in your One and Six Road and Bridge Construction Program for the 21, 26, page 7, the Intersection Improvement Project, engineering costs are included for $50,000 for fiscal year '21. And then, we see the specific project listed again on page 11 for fiscal years 23, 22 through 26. This time, it's listed as pavement turn lanes, but at a cost of $50,000. So, I don't know, I, I don't know what that means. That's for you guys to figure out. Page 8 of that same report, the Fiscal Year '21 Standby Projects, it does list Firth Road to Stagecoach Road as second stage pavement for $1.9 million. I don't know whether that intersection improvement is included in that. To me, it doesn't look like it, but you guys can shed some light on that. So, again, I'm here to ask you to make that intersection widening improvement a top priority for 2021. I believe if you surveyed most of the residents in the area, you would, you would find that we would prefer a project focused on the safety of our children to be the top priority. I and other neighbors, I've already agreed that we don't care what route we have to take as long as that intersection gets improved. So, I know budgeting is a concern. However, on the scale of things, a $500,000 project is not very expensive compared to the cost we've already incurred by not taking this action. Thank you for your time tonight.
That, that's all the people that have signed in.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak?
If there's no one else, Commissioner Flowerday, may I make the closing statement?
Please. And just real quickly, no other members of the public wishing to speak? No one in the back room there? Engineer England, it's all you.
There, we're on. Thank you for your time tonight and for your thoughtful comments about the roads and bridges of Lancaster County. Please know that it is an honor to passionately serve you as your engineer and that my staff and I will continue to strive to improve the infrastructure that you use every day. And I would like to also humbly thank my staff. I know on a day-to-day basis, we have more to do than we can ever get done, but yet we come to work every day and we try to meet that goal. I also was remiss earlier as I was trying to introduce my staff from behind me in introducing our construction manager, Doug Sindler, and I'm, I'm sorry, I apologize, Doug. I didn't, you've done a great job. And Doug is also new to our team. In addition, I do have a letter from Waverly School District supporting the construction, the pavement of Fletcher Avenue. And then, lastly, I would like to state, although there are many projects that I would really, really like to see done in Lancaster County, and my peer elected officials up here would, would, would let you know that I do often pressure them for additional funding. And on occasion, they do get irritated with me for that pressure. But in saying that, sadly, the One and Six Plan is what we call fiscally constrained. And so, I can only show projects in the plan going forward projecting the monies that we have been allocated. It is by no means all-inclusive of the needs of Lancaster County Engineering Department roads or bridges. So, thank you for coming tonight, and if you wish to contact our staff to discuss any of these projects in further detail, we will make ourselves available to you.
Very good. Well, thank you again for, everyone for being here. Thank you to the clerk's office for staying late with us. If there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
I move we adjourn.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. Please call a roll.
Short?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
We are adjourned. Thank you.